Focus in on best outcomes for our kids. Our next topic is senior high exit service, survey. Dr. Schatz?
Thank you. As you know, over the last several years now, we've been doing a senior high exit survey. And so annually, we bring this report to you. So tonight, we have two of our high school principals here to do that. Mr., Dr. Birch is out in Bismarck today with Dr. Gross at an ESA meeting. And so that's the reason why Dr. Birch is not here. But I'm going to turn it over to these two gentlemen, and they're going to do their presentation on the results of the survey that they conducted last spring.
I'll take care of that for you, Andy.
I had kind of a sore back, and so I was, I told Troy earlier today that I might not be here, and then he said, "Oh, that's fine, I'll just throw you under the bus." So I am here, so.
Oh, that's good. It's always good, I think, from our perspective, to present this annual data as it is, an opportunity for us as building principals to, just to say, "Thank you for what you do. Each and every year, we get this opportunity, and we're grateful for this as well, too." If you recall, just some baseline data, I think for the majority of you understand that in the spring, we administer at all of the high schools, including Woodrow Wilson High School. Woodrow Wilson, I just confirmed with David, will present their findings later at a different board meeting. So tonight's data, we are pulling just from the three comprehensive high schools. This past spring, 627 total student responses. Tonight's presentation, again, will not include the Woodrow Wilsons. They've been category, put into three different categories, similar to what Andy had put together. This was my year to, we rotate that around, this was my year to collect that data, but we'll continue to speak on those three themes throughout tonight's data presentation. One of the, Kirby?
What is that? I'll throw you under the bus. Category names are supposed to be up there? So 68% of the kids there should be, what, high school graduates?
They are, yes, they are, definitely.
And then they go on to college, don't they? And so seventy, almost 70% of the kids go off to four-year schools.
That's right. Andy, this is Andy's presentation that I, that we had put, no, I'm just kidding. I'm not sure how that worked, whatnot, too, but we'll send you the updated one. I do actually have this here, but if you have your glasses, we can kind of put that together there. We printed those slides, saving some papers.
Well, I can't read this, Troy.
Okay, we'll just move on into this one here, too. No, that's fine. So, one of the questions that we pull is, "Where do you plan on attending college?" And this obviously ties, and we do have some interest as it relates to our North Dakota State Scholarship. And so 61% of our graduates will attend a college in-state, 39 outstate. And to get a little bit more specific where those are, just, we've highlighted the majority of those in our area. And I know Andy has a comment a little bit about some of those in our metro area, but it's fairly consistent that in our metro, we're approaching 70%. And this year, just a little bit downtick, a little bit, but in the past, Andy, you were mentioning as well.
Well, I think, I think it's kind of interesting when you look at, like, NDSU, for example, almost, or a little more than a fourth of the students are attending NDSU, and this is all of our college graduates. And then when I looked at just in the metro area, you know, if you look at Morehead State, or if you look at Concordia, UND, anything local in North Dakota, it's about half of our kids are attending NDSU at North High, and it's probably pretty similar at the other buildings as well. But again, a lot of kids are staying local, but again, more of them are going to NDSU.
Back to the previous slide, one of the respondents was, "What do you plan on doing after high school?" In that, in that pie graph, and 4% of our graduates indicated that they planned on working. And up just a little bit, last year's data was 3%. And so a follow-up question is, is if you did answer, "Where do you plan on working?", the response is that obviously nearly 60% of our, the folks that are going to go into working are going to be in the local area. And then Minnesota, 12%, and then the other two categories as well, 12% in North Dakota and other. It was kind of fun reading through the respondents of the other, everything from "As far away from here as possible," to, you know, "The east coast," or "I'm headed to California for a while," or whatever that looks like as well. But that's just kind of some of the responses in that last category. We'll move towards, a little bit more towards the academic side, and we ask questions surrounding the students' experiences in their school. And this one talks a little bit about how they feel. Again, majority of the response is how students feel. And we always are sensitive to when you ask the question, is it, was it right after a real big, hard test, or was it, you know, during a real fun day? And so you kind of be able to, I think, find trend data. And for the most part, this is a little bit more of an uptick. Last year was seven, in the 78th percentile, but nearly 80% of our students agree, or strongly agree, that they are feeling academically challenged in school. And then when you get to a little bit more specific about your individual school, and what does that look like about the high quality and the total education? I think this is important, because I think that brings a lot of things in. When we say offers a high quality, you're bringing in the fine arts, you are bringing in all of those experiences that we provide, and you see an increase of 10% in the agree or strongly agree category. This is an area that specifically at Davies, we've been focusing in on, and it was interesting to kind of see the consistency at our school, was it even just a little bit higher as it relates to the disagreeing? But, you know, we find and try to strike that balance with, related to homework. And, you know, and you just ask the question, "What is the proper amount of homework?" And, and I think as you kind of lay out with the conversation, at least with teachers, what we did, we had some level of conversation about how much homework is appropriate, and what degree. And, and what we have found is that students necessarily don't mind doing homework, but it's just that feedback, and how quickly we can give them that feedback, and the relevance of that feedback, and how much is, is put into homework. And so this is an area that we are specifically focusing in on, and just trying to at least raise the question about how much homework is appropriate, and when do you give it? But I thought this was something that would be.
And I think what Troy just mentioned there about relevancy, I think when you give an assignment to a class of 25 students, not every student is going to feel like that homework is relevant. Some kids have already understood the material, and they find it as more busy work, and then other kids find it challenging, so then they don't think it's appropriate either. And so it's that happy medium in there. So I don't think I would be too worried about those different percentages there, because of the fact of you have that variety within a class period.
The area about independent learning skills, feel fairly confident that this is a good replication of earlier slides as well. It talks about, you know, are we developing you as an independent learner? And, and this is also paralleled to our 21st century skills. If you remember, one of the 21st century skills is really building a team player. And out in our workforce, we know that, that it's important to be a strong team member, but also being able to have that self-initiative and that self-drive to be able to do independent work on your own, and complete that task on your, on your own as well, too. So just asking the question, have we helped in developing those independent learning skills? And 91% of our graduates said that they agree or strongly agree.
I think the other part with regards to this survey question is that when you think about independent learning skills, you know, where were they developed? It could be in a club or an activity that happens outside of the school day, or even through a parent organization, or Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, any of those types of things, I think, help in the development. And as you get just naturally older, everybody wants to become more independent, and some kids actually are living on their own by the time they're a senior. But a good result in that category. You know, I, I think Troy now gave me the, the questions on how I feel and so forth, and everybody knows that as high school principals, we're the touchy-feely type people. And so, again, this, thanks, thanks, buddy. And I feel, again, the courses offered at Fargo Public Schools have adequately prepared me for the future. And I think some of that can be answered by, not all the courses that we offer here in the Fargo Public Schools are going to be relevant to students. And some kids have to take courses that they're saying, "You know what, I don't see that as, as being relevant," or that "I need higher-order type courses," and so forth. And they're going to get that beyond high school. And so even if they go to a tech school, or a college, or four-year institution, they're going to be taking courses that are going to be more relevant in their, where they're going to be in their future. You know, we went to the one-to-one initiative a number of years ago, and this question just asking about teachers' utilization of technology in their classrooms, I don't think this is a surprising result, that 93% agree, or even strongly agree, that teachers are utilizing that technology in their classroom. Of course, some of our other courses that are more hands-on might not be using the type of technology that kids are thinking about when they see this question, like in our tech ed area, or even in our physical education classes. In physical education, we might be using a Tri-FIT piece of equipment, and, or in tech ed, you're using some other thing that is actually tied to technology. But again, it's a good result here with regards to your investment.
You know, one of the things, too, also, that I think some of you that have visited the buildings, we have several of our classrooms are moving towards a flipped classroom. And, and I think when you talk about that flipped classroom, that would be the teacher actually doing the instruction piece via video. And so maybe that student would be looking at that PLD and watching that lesson being delivered via video, and so that when the student arrives to the classroom, then all of that time is spent on answering questions, and, and being able to be a resource for that student. And so that, I think, plays into this as well. The other piece that I know in, in visiting with students as it relates to the, the technology, students now that are missing school now have access to a lot of Google Classroom. Those of you that have kids, you probably have seen or heard, we've got a number of our teachers using Google Classroom, where they can upload documents, and moving a little bit away from a lot, lot of the paper as well, too. And then lastly, we can also talk about the planning. We have the daily planner that was delivered, and, and students now can look out in advanced and see what are the things coming down the road. And so that's also something that I think when we talk about utilizing the technology, it's not necessarily always just for the instructional side, but it's also for their planning and knowing that, "I'm going to be gone next Tuesday, and what do we got coming down the river," and things to that degree, so.
Even after our teachers have completed some of those type of flipped classrooms, administratively, we've done some podcasts that we then present to, to our teachers that they can review before school starts. That kind of shortens up our, our back-to-school faculty-type meetings, and they get that information in probably a more succinct way as well, is that when you have to produce a podcast, and you have an eight- or 10-minute video that you want to produce, it's just quicker and easier to do it that way, and then they can do it at their own leisure, just like kids. Again, a strong result here with my teachers care about me, 94% agree or strongly agree. That's actually up slightly from last year, so again, a positive result there. And in combination with that, a number of adults in this building who know me well, you know, nearly, what is that, 2/3 of our kids think that four or more teachers know the kids well, know them well. And so I think that's a real testament to our support staff and teachers in our buildings. One of the programs that we have at North High School is "Every Student Needs a Champion." I don't know if you've ever seen the YouTube video by Rita Pearson, but it's worth a look. And we have adopted a theme at North High School where we match a number of our students who would benefit from having a champion. In fact, we just did what we called our champion draft, and each teacher has two to three to four kids that they are mentoring throughout the course of this year.
And one of the things that we're doing specifically at Davies High School this year is we are asking our staff to be extremely intentional with some of their open period times, and a little bit before or after school. Because as I looked at the number of students that have looked at, answered one or less, to me, that should be nonexistent. And so if we can just move that needle a little bit, and according to this 5%, the number statistics would be about 37 students answered one or less. You know, and as we think about that, so there are 37 seniors that went through four years of high school that answered that question with one or less. So we've got a little work to do. I mean, to me, if, if somebody is able to get through four years of high school and only answering that with one or less, then we're missing the boat on a few of those kids. Now, I wish we could do a little bit more follow-up and ask them, were they involved in clubs and activities? As Andy mentioned, these are adults, these aren't necessarily teachers. So that's where, when we're visiting with our pairs, and we're visiting with our custodians, and we're visiting with our kitchen staff, I mean, we all have an impact on students and knowing a little bit about them. And so I'm hoping that when we come back here a year from now, we can say that we've moved the needle a little bit on this specific result.
And one of the things that we're both trying to do is to encourage kids to be involved in our activities. You know, we have a personal goal of having each student be involved in two or more activities during the course of the year. And we're trying to get our champion teachers to also go to those different events, and it might be a freshman volleyball game, or it might be a cross-country, it might be a concert, it might be a drama production. And again, our, our teachers have endorsed that idea by attending some of those kids' events as well. An important result here with regards to feeling safe at school each day, and so 90% agree or strongly disagree. Again, whenever you have any percentage there of, in this case, 10%, that disagree or strongly disagree, it probably gives us reasons for concerns and so forth. But again, this is up slightly from last year, and again, generally, I think we feel our schools are safe. I think we're getting to the end here. But again, I feel students respect each other. 2/3 of the kids agree or strongly agree, 36% disagree or strongly disagree, and I don't think that's a surprise to us at all. When you think about whether or not there had been something that occurred during the course of the year, because they took, take a look at this from a global perspective, I'm sure that they've seen kids that haven't treated each other appropriately or respectfully. So again, up slightly, but again, a concern probably.
And in an area that we would encourage our kids is if you do see this activity happening, are we intervening? Are we, are we mentioning to them that's inappropriate? And another interesting fact is, this is to students' perspective of others, but then I, you know, I always ask the kids this year, at least in our back-to-school meetings, is how many are looking at you and putting you in that 36% category? And getting kids to think a little bit about that outside the box, and how do we adjust and move students to a point of being more respectful, and how they talk to one another? And, you know, I might overhear a couple of students giving each other a hard time about name-calling, or just, but in their own little small circle, that's okay. And, and as an outsider, I don't realize that, so. But, and again, we just, we, we take on, at least at Davies', this idea of we need, we need this care-frontational approach. We need to care enough to confront when things are getting out of control with students and how they talk, or they treat one another.
And both of us have had respect retreats conducted in our buildings. We have companies, I've used, you've used Frontiers, I think you've used Raleigh Johnson. At different times, they've come in during the course of the year to have a respect retreat, and spend a full day of activities, just trying to get kids to be more respectful for one another. At the end of our year, we also do a wisdom retreat with our seniors, which has also been beneficial. Then at the very end of the survey, there's open responses, and we've kind of categorized, yeah, no surprise on the first one, you know, and I, I always think about that as, as, well, it's not surprising totally. Does, do any of us eat at a restaurant 175 days during the course of the year, the same restaurant? The answer is no. Okay? And so, in this case, you're going to the same restaurant, maybe having some variety there, but again, everybody would like to have some different choices and options there. Less homework and relevant homework is still something that kids have talked about there. And then the last couple of things is fewer tests on same day. And so if you could ever design a schedule where you could get only one class, or, and we do that, or one test on, on a day, that'd be a challenge because of the variety of things that we have and offer there.
You know, on that one, too, I talked a little bit about, I know Andy has the block classes at North, at North at Davies, on a little bit, too. And so those students that, in a sense, have a tough time juggling those seven to eight periods a day, that's where I think the strength inside of the block program, because you wouldn't have multiple tests. I mean, they're, they're the two periods that are put together, and there's uptick on, related to that as well, too. And then the last piece, too, obviously, that, that relates to our school spirit, and just kids want to see more kids involved in, in attending my activities and things across the board as well, too.
We just had homecoming last week, and what a spirited week at North High, and we actually played Davies High School.
Did that work out for you?
Not so well. But, but, a great game, wasn't it?
It was a good.
It was a great game. Well, we wanted to, you know, well, and, and so, but we had a pep rally.
You went there, you went there.
I know, I know. But we had a, we had a pep rally on Friday, which was just outstanding, and I had our Hall of Fame people who are graduates, or a former teacher, and I talked to the former teacher, and he says he just got goosebumps for the fact that our kids were so spirited. And the other two that I talked to with regards to just to the pep rally, I don't remember them that exciting, you know, and they were just, thought it was really pretty cool.
That's where I think if we were to give this survey, for example, at North High on Friday or Monday after homecoming week, these results would be off the charts. Remember, we're giving these back in the spring, dictionary word now, and so those will also have to be taken into context.
And also with regards to some real positive things, again, with regards to our, our staffs at both, all three high schools, opportunities, of course, are prevalent, and of course, the use of technology and having a safe environment was prevalent throughout. I believe that wraps it up there.
Off the board, I want to thank you, too. You've been a great comedy duo tonight. And this is available for, you know, your viewing pleasure later online. And now I know fully well why Woodrow Wilson wanted to report separately.
Thank you.
Our next topic is an update on our summer school that just got completed. And you're going to do an introduction?
It's abundantly clear that without Dr. Birch here, the two gentlemen that just presented need some additional assistance, so I'm sure we'll pass that on to them. So thanks for your report. So summer school, I appreciated the report that Laura gave with regard to how busy people are during the summer, but what a lot of people don't realize is just how busy the schools are during the summer and all the different programming that we have. And again, that's staffed by teachers and other support staff throughout the summer who choose to engage in that. And so we have the leaders of our summer school program here to do a report, and so that's David Berkman and Rebecca Holden. And so I'll just turn it over to you, Dave, I believe, and you can take off from there.
School report, I'll turn the mic on. Kind of a deja vu each year, but do want to thank you all for the board barbecue that you do each, each summertime. It's a lot more work than I think people probably know, but it is greatly appreciated by the, the staff who are on in the summertime. So on behalf of people that enjoyed the event, thank you. Chefs, nicely done. I'm going to give a brief overview of summer school, and then Rebecca, Jim, and Jennifer will, will talk about specific programming. The number, 14,427 hours. So 14,427 hours. Page two of the, the report says that there were 5,771 successful seat opportunities. Using an average of about two and a half hours per session, it may have been orchestra camp at Discovery, it may have been driver's education at South, it may have been a remedial class at Carl Ben, it may have been a trollwood rehearsal. But using two and a half hours, we had youth, our Fargo Public School students, putting in 14,427 hours of constructive, constructive time. Collectively, that's a, that's, that's a very sizable number. Now, as far as what, what those hours represent, it's access to opportunity, and it's, it's not obvious what the opportunity is, in my opinion. The theater students who use at the Shields Arena would say, "Thank you, school board and Fargo Public Schools for offering summer school." Like, "What do you mean, the theater departments?" Well, we have a huge group of students taking summer school who are theater students, who want to take a theater and a music during the school year. Without summer school, they're unable to have that opportunity to, to dive as deep into the arts as they would like to. We have a large group of art, music students, foreign language students, CTE, career tech ed students. Other opportunities, students just trying to catch up deficits that they maybe dug themselves a hole in. Their opportunity is, "All right, I can get back on my feet with summer school," or middle school remediation. So I guess the, the, on behalf of the students that, that enjoyed, that worked hard in summer school, thank you for the opportunity, and if this opportunity were not there, what, what might they have been doing? So we, we do appreciate to provide a very constructive summer experience for students. So with that introduction, I'm going to step back, and each of the program leads is going to talk about the programming.
Hello, I'm Rebecca Holden. I am the principal at Clare Barton Hawthorne Elementary during the school year. In the summer, I take on two programs. And then just a little about me, I'm a former Spartan, SoCo Spartans. And then I have the privilege of having a senior this year at Davies, so I'm a mom as well. So I'm going to take you through the summer school program a little bit, and we'll start on page two. I run two elementary programs in the summer, and the first one is Transition Summer School. This is the month of July, three weeks in July. On page two, you can see a little bit about our programs. We have three courses that we really offer. All are from 8:00 to noon, so they have the option of doing a math course, a reading course, or a math-reading combo course. Page two kind of outlines how a student would qualify for this program. This is a program that needs to be referred by the teacher, so not everyone can just sign up, but there are lots of opportunities to qualify for this. So that is all reported on page two. On page three, it talks a little bit about the students that we had this year. This is the first year in a long time, I think, that we actually had every elementary building open. HMR and CBH did pick one of their campuses to hold school at, otherwise, we were able to service students at every elementary. So on here are the students' numbers. One thing that's a little bit unique about Transition Summer School is it's free. It is funded through the state, so when students register, there's nothing really tying them to showing up on that first day. So our numbers registered and the numbers that actually attend do fluctuate quite a bit each year. And as you can see, we had 762 register and 640 attend. So you can see at each building who registered and who attended. Each year, we have kiddos from all over. One of the requirements for this program is that they have to have a Fargo address. So Dad may live here in the summer, students may come from Arizona, we have one every year from Arizona that comes to spend summer with Dad, because they have a Fargo address, they can then partake in our program. So we also service Oak Grove, Nativity, Grace Lutheran, those, those schools as well. So we had 640 students attend across the district, and it was a wonderful program, and we have many, many staff who help. We have many teachers that like to teach within their own building, that teach there during the school year, and then we have many that like to try something new in the summer and go see what other schools like, and, and get the feeling for another school. Then on page four, the other program that I run is the Elementary Enrichment Summer School. This is the last three weeks in June. These are kind of those fun little courses that teachers just love to be able to give some experiences to their students. So we've tried to kind of move it around. Last year, it was at Kennedy Elementary, the year before that, it was at Washington. This summer, we were able to do it in the middle of the town at Clare Barton. So we're kind of trying to get everybody and kind of move it around there. We were lucky enough to bring teachers from the high school down to work with our elementary kids. We had one of our specialists doing sign language for our students, who's in charge of that with the district. So we had a lot of great options. On page four and five are some of the different courses that we were able to offer. Everything from French courses, computer enrichment, writing, arts, sign language, science, reading and math, there was a, a nice variety this summer. And then on page six is the number of students who registered. We had 243 courses registered for. Some of those students took two different courses, they might have done a course from 8:00 to 10:00, and then a second course from 10:00 to 12:00. So we ended up with 241 of those completing those courses. And then on page 13, just because somebody asked, Linda, we have the data over time for you on there. On page 13, it kind of, it walks you through the numbers over time. And for my two programs this year, we were very consistent and up a little bit for Transition Summer School over the past couple of years, and very steady for enrichment. Any questions that I can answer?
Go ahead, Linda.
Well, my daughter, who was a graduate of Fargo South and proud band member, and now a teacher, I'm going to take a picture of this and send it to her, because she's been grinding on me about middle school band for years, and, you know. So she'll be, so on behalf of Lindsay, bravo on that one.
So we start working on summer school in December. It's, it's a process, and so we'll, we'll start the planning already in December for next year and look for some fun courses for our kids. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Jim Keel. I'm the assistant principal at Woodrow Wilson at Agassi, and also the summer school assistant principal. And I've been tasked with talking about the secondary summer school programming. Before we get started, though, I want to comment, I am a parent of a student in the district, and also the spouse of a teacher. All three of us participated in summer programming this summer, so we really embrace that as a family, which is nice.
a family, which is nice. Secondary summer programming summary starts on page seven. Some of the highlights to think about in terms of the for-credit opportunities. Students who are taking summer school for credit do need to attend a super block, which is a four and a half hour chunk for fifteen days. So, if you think about fifteen, sixteen-year-old student attending the same class for four and a half hours for fifteen consecutive days, that's a major commitment. And so, those students are dedicated, for whatever reasons. Maybe they're, as David's saying, tried to get caught up. Some of them are trying to get ahead. Some of them are trying to make room in their schedules, but they're all very thankful for that opportunity. So, it is a major commitment. In terms of the courses, some of those do use a flexible scheduling. Our driver's ed program, they do meet for a four and a half hour block, but then the students also have to spend six hours behind the wheel with an instructor. And so, that's in addition to the sixty-seven and a half hours of in-class time. The marketing co-op involves students working on a job and getting evaluations and doing some learning on the job, which we all do every day. The ROTC program is a camp, so the students go to camp for a week with the Colonel and crew. So, that's a major commitment, again, for our students because they're gone for four or five nights. Successful School and Life Skills is our transition program. Eighth graders transitioning into the high schools are invited to attend the Summer Academy. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a bit. And then, summer work experience is for some special ed students who are building that job skill database. If they have questions about that chunk of it. Middle school programming is remedial. Primary focus is sixth and seventh graders. The students who are just finishing eighth grade are, again, invited to attend the Summer Academy, which is a for-credit opportunity. So, they spend three weeks in June in the building that they're traveling to. They're starting ninth grade that fall. Opportunity to work on English and math skills, but more importantly, building familiarity, getting to know the staff, meeting with counselors, meeting with principals, working with teachers. And so, the teachers who teach this class are teachers who work in that school during the school year, and they're offering to teach this class. We had significant growth in enrollment. I'll talk about that in a minute. Some of the other programs we do offer, the band and orchestra. We're in year three in the orchestra. The numbers for that continue to grow. Athletics is a huge chunk. We have coaches from across the district who set up their schedules. We do the registrations for them. We collect the monies for them. We make sure they get paid, make sure their support staff gets paid, make sure their assistant coaches get paid. So, it's a big, big project as well, as you can see if you look at the next page, the number of opportunities in the sports world. It's a lot. I understand Trolwood's going to be coming back, so I won't talk about that. And then, I'll ask you to skip ahead to page thirteen, which does have, as Linda likes to see, the longitudinal data. Some of the pieces that I pulled out of it when looking at it, in terms of our overall numbers for credit, it's very stable. If you look at the academic line, yes, it's down slowly over time. I think the reason for that is the other opportunities that this district provides for students. They can access online coursework. They can access night schools. They have remedial opportunities in their buildings during the school day. So, I think that's an explanation for why some of those academic numbers are declining. But if you add up all the credits that are earned, actually, we're up a little bit over the previous year. So, we're still growing in that way. Summer Academy, we had forty-three students attend this year. A year ago, I stood here and said, "That's a program that needs to grow," and it's grown a lot. I think it still needs to grow. We have a lot of students making that difficult transition from eighth to ninth grade. We need to provide them the opportunities. And so, we're doing a lot of outreach with the middle schools, the counselors there, trying to improve that number so that students can enter ninth grade successful on day one. The side effect of that, however, is that the middle school remedial numbers are showing a little bit of weakness, and that's because those students are being counted in a different spot. Does anybody have questions about those numbers? I'll pass it over to Jennifer, then.
Down or get a stool here.[895.04][895.04][laughter] A little shorter.
Sorry, I just have that last page, page eighteen. And like everyone else, I would like to echo my gratitude. The five hundred and eleven students that attended programming at Agassi for adult ed or even start would send their appreciation and my staff. There's about ten different teachers that worked to provide these opportunities. So, thank you for that and the space and all of the opportunities that they have. It's a privilege to be part of that team, for sure. So, we had, our numbers were up a little for GED, just by about ten students. And so, if you looked at the classroom there probably five or six years ago, the percentage of our EL adults that were attending GED was about 12%. And if you look into a classroom now, it is at least eighty percent of our adult ELS filling that classroom. And so, they may be EL students that had attended a high school in the metro area or somewhere else, but a number of them have followed through that transition of level one, two, three, or four, or five EL on the adult ed side and moving over to GED. So, that's really neat to see and see for the future of the opportunities for their families. Our numbers were a little down a little bit, but relatively in the same amount for the adult EL classes. We have five classes in the morning, three in the afternoon, and then two that run two nights a week. Our drivers literacy numbers were down this year, but if you go down a few to our integrated English technology class or training classes, the pre-CNA, job skills, computer lit, those are up. And so, some of the students that had done the drivers lit have now shifted over to computer, or some that are wanting to do computer or pre-CNA are doing that first and then going back and forth. So, that's what they kind of chose to do with their summer. Our citizenship numbers are right about the same as well. The pre-CNA, we do as a part of a career pathway. They will come to us for about eight weeks and work on entry-level skills, measuring input and output, blood pressure, and then the language of being a CNA. What does that look like? What are the vocabulary terms that you need to do? And then, there's another step at NDSCS through the Skills Development Project where they can tend a longer period of pre-CNA classes, more intensive skills. And then, the idea is that they go to a more faster-paced CNA class, and we offer one of those at Bethany Homes, but it's intense. It's seventy-five hours. It's three weeks. The academic English that you need to go through that is pretty fast-paced. And so, building this career ladder, if you would, is really helpful for those EL adults who are trying to acquire that language. Partnership that we piloted with Job Service a few years ago through a grant is able, something that DPA was able to pick up with our adult ed grants, and that's a basic job skills class. So, we have two different levels, looking at the world of work and the language behind working and filling out applications and talking about transferable skills. Maybe they didn't have a professional career in the country they came from, but what are some of those skills that they had there that can transfer into a job and helping them look for different opportunities and applying? And that's, the partnership with Job Service is really strong. They come on-site once a week, at least. I say "at least" because they'll make appointments for those individuals who request that and working together to get them into a paid work experience or a unpaid work experience to build some career skills and time management and having something to put on an application. So, the students are really helpful. If you ask the Job Service staff, they think it's a tremendous collaboration. Our computer literacy class is something we do through a grant through vocational rehabilitation, and we service students through workforce safety and insurance that have been injured on the job. And so, we have that computer class available for those students, but because of the, we're reusing the computer lab that we have for GED testing when it's not used for testing, we use it for this class. And so, because we have a number of seats, WSI might not be sending a full classroom full, and so, we'll open it up to our EL or adult GED students to make that a better learning experience. If you're that injured worker coming for computer class, you already feel like you're the only adult in Fargo who doesn't know how to use computers. And if you come to a really small class, that fear has been validated. So, opening it up and adding a few other students makes it a better environment for them. The elder citizenship, again, there's lots of partnerships that go into adult ed is with Lutheran Social Services. It was started a number of years ago because the Bhutanese refugees that were coming in were facing severe depression. The incident of suicide rates were up across the nation for that particular group, and so this class was built to get them into the school through citizenship. There's a senior programming that happens in the cafeteria, that multipurpose space downstairs. And so, it really helped that group of individuals, and it's open to all groups. But that group particularly feel welcome and help them adjust and work towards their citizenship and then also coming into adult ed classes. And then, our even start numbers are up slightly, and we are doing that with the same staff group, but how that looks or why that looks different is a number of our single moms have been connected with the Job Service class and our Job Service caseworkers and have been able to get into employment. And so, as they moved, new families came in. So, that is kind of a long snapshot of the five hundred and eleven students that came through. And like I said, I would just echo for our students and our staff that would say thank you for that opportunity. Questions?
Well, first of all, I want to thank all of you for a great report. I do have one question, David, and I don't need an answer today. Maybe you have it. Your five hundred and seventy-seven, five thousand seven hundred and seventy-one seat time opportunities? What would you guess the total number of individual, unique students is in that number? Half of that?
I would say probably three thousand.
So... Close to 25% of our student population is availing themselves of our summer school opportunities, which is absolutely tremendous. I can't remember which one of you said it, but if we weren't doing this, what would these kids be doing? Well, they'd probably be having a lot of fun, but they'd be farther behind when school started in the fall. So, hats off to the entire summer school teaching staff and team. Any other questions?
Again, it just demonstrates what, it demonstrates, you know, what goes on during the summer. I want to compliment this team because this is quite a team of people that we have here running this. It takes a lot of things to make this happen. They've got their regular administrative job they're doing during the school year while they're starting to get ready for the summer school, so they're doing double duty on that. And then, summer school hits, and it's fast-paced, and it has to be kept up with, and they just do a tremendous job. And I want to welcome Jim Keel to the team here officially because Jim, this year, made the move from being a counselor itself to being the Assistant Principal over at Agassi, and it's a perfect pick. Jim is just going to be a tremendous asset to the entire group. And so, hats off to all four of you for just continued great work. So, thank you for all you do.
Absolutely. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to our next topic, enrollment update. Dr. Shatz.
Well, what we have before you is a snapshot from yesterday at the end, close to the end of the day at 2:30. As you know, we have a live, if you will, interactive enrollment dashboard that we use to keep track of enrollments. And so, we monitor this weekly, daily, depending on whatever we're looking at and what we want to know. I know I look at it every day because I'm always interested in how does the enrollment change from day to day. And as we've talked about, the mobility level within our district is quite high. It's at 10 to 12%. So, this number at the top, when it says District Summary Enrollment, 11, 374, that'll fluctuate each day. The end of the day, today, it was down 10. Tomorrow might be up 5. But what we know is that from the first day of registrations that we have, and everybody always wants to know, "What's the first day enrollment?" Well, that was 11, 450. Well, we always adjust down after that. Those are students who are registered, but sometimes leave, don't let us know they're leaving. Then, we have students that come that hadn't registered. And so, once it all settles, usually when we get to the end of the September, that's usually the number that we settle on. But when you look at this and you compare to last year, we're looking at having more students this year than we did last year, new. So, I'm thinking it's going to land around 150, maybe 175. That might be a little bit high. We'll see what happens throughout the month. But I know that we're going to have, we do have more students in the district this year, just as was predicted by RSP. Last year, the number was a little bit low. This year, it's going to be a little bit high, but when you take the average, it's about right on with what we expected for each year in our growth. And so, it's a modest growth, a growth that we can absorb and that we can plan for. I know that Rachel is always nervous at the beginning of the year, particularly with the elementary sections. Do we need to split a section, add a section, that kind of thing? But that settled in pretty well, too, this year. So, there was only a couple of adjustments that needed to be made. You have the data from each one of the schools, and again, if you look at the RSP report, it all tracks just about what we had anticipated. So, there's really no big surprises here. As we know, the enrollment continues to grow on the far south end of town, and we've already talked about Davies and Discovery, and that's going to be a major discussion this year for the board and administration to bring forward information as we continue to monitor that. And Rob Schwartz from RSP, he'll be doing his updated report for us. I have a meeting with him in a week, and then he'll crunch the numbers. And sometime in that October timeframe, we get the report from Rob, and we'll see what he's projecting for the next five years. So, that's what it is yesterday, and if there's any questions, Rachel and I can answer if there are any questions on the data.
You explained that so well. There are no questions. Okay. Which brings me to the other summer work project, apparently. Administrative policy updates.
Before you, is a packet of administrative policy updates. And as I told you before, we spent the last couple of years really taking a look at a lot of policies that had to be updated and needed updating. And then, last year, we started with series reviews. And so, this year, again, a lot of policies came forward that needed to be looked at, but then there was also the series review. And we went into the 3,000 series, and that really falls within the purview of Brock and his departments. So, all of the 3,000 policies were reviewed to make sure they were updated with any kind of changes that maybe happened through North Dakota Sentry Code, any new laws or citations to make sure that they were updated to current status. And so, Brock and his department did that. Along the way, there's always policies that come forward that need to be further reviewed, and we know that as we walked, worked through the year last year, the safety concerns came up. We needed to review a lot of the different types of things associated with that, so that work has been done this summer. And so, what we have before you tonight is where we've landed after the whole process this summer. So, I'm going to walk you through some of these. I'm not going to go through them all. If you have questions, you can certainly ask. And when I get to the grouping of policies addressing the safety issues, some of the student discipline things, I'll explain a little bit more of what's going on with that. So, as you can see, new policy, school lunch account policy. This was brought to you back in June since it was mandated by USDA. You've already seen that, and so, that's just letting you know that that policy was added. AP 5117 confidentiality. You can see it's a new policy regarded for staff members regarding confidentiality of students' family information, including a form to use of obtaining free and reduced lunch information. Again, updated, and we retired a policy and added this one. AP 5490 is, I think, pretty much self-explanatory, so we do have that policy now. AP 5950, as we have said that we would do exit surveys with retiring staff, this now reflects that within this policy. We did not have a policy for that, and so, we now have an exit survey policy. Any questions on the new policies?
I have a question on 5490. So, regarding the lactation policy, so are we set up so that we're able to provide that service throughout the district as indicated in the policy?
Yes, and if you go through the policy and you look at it, it's set up for that. And so, whatever questions, concerns, or needs that there might be, those would be addressed. Okay, as we continue on, I'm not going to go through all the 3,000s, and some of these here are very minor revisions. But what I want to get you to is at the bottom of the page, AP 5120, Transfer and Reassignment. And I just want to spend a moment saying this, is that since August, I've had three opportunities to sit down with Laura, the new president, with the FEA, and we've had very good meetings, and I think Laura would agree. And so, one of the things that I wanted to do this year is that with all of these policy adjustments, we actually sat down in a meeting and went through them. And I presented all of this to Laura. And then, there were specific ones that I gave to her. And so, anything that was significantly impacting anything to do with employees or staff, those were given to Laura. She and I first went through them, and then she sat down with a group of people with her organization, went through those. And then, we sat down again together and talked about things they brought forward as concerns or maybe some changes or some language questions. We talked about it. We made some further adjustments. Uh, we talked about it. We made some further adjustments. So tonight, as we sit here, this is where we've landed so far. And what I've told Laura is that as we implement policies, as we, um, take a look at policies and recreate policies, if once we get those implemented and we see that things aren't working just the way we thought they would, I'm more than happy to sit down again and have another discussion. So we've been having that kind of discourse and so far, um, I'm very pleased with the willingness of Laura to work with us on that and your group. And so these have been looked at, just so you know, okay? With the input, uh, and this reflects that. Transfer and reassignment policy is updated to simplify the policy. Um, it's provided for you in this packet. Um, it basically changes it pretty significantly, um, from what the original policy was. But as you know, we had added the list of different considerations to look at if a transfer, uh, involuntary transfer is, is necessitated. And as we talked about, and I'm going to go into, uh, find this policy in here. As we talked about the reassignment of staff, the seniority and experience piece with a, was a conversation during the negotiations process. We did move that up to the top of the list of things to consider. So if you were to find 5120 in there, you'll see that seniority and experience is listed as number one. And so that's where, where we have landed at this time and, and with this policy. So if there's any questions, I'd entertain those on that. As you go to the next one, AP 5225, layoff and recall policy updated to complement or, or to, uh, come in compliance with what the teacher contract had. So if you look at layoffs and recalls, we had implemented that last year. And then we went back, we made some adjustments. We also put in the list of different items that would be considered when looking at layoffs and, and non-renewal. And again, we put seniority and experience at the top of the list. So that's the adjustment there. The rest of the language that you see in there, a lot of that reflected directly to what the contract is and Brittany helped with that. So minor adjustments to staff conduct. And a lot of the minor adjustments that you see in some of these other ones that I won't spend much time with are the reflection of some of the other policies that we put in place. So it was just making sure everything was consistent. The longevity policy, policy updated for, uh, specificity on support staff. Just making sure that we had noted that support staff was also in there because they are part of that. Uh, the one that everybody's interested in, AP 5455, employee safety used to be one paragraph. It is now a longer policy. So policy updated regarding students' sa- and staff safety, student behaviors, and it now includes reporting forms. And so if we go to 5455, you will see that it is a more extensive policy, uh, giving more, more guidance, if you will, at all different levels of the groups. And then there is a incident report form that we are implementing and asking people to use very specifically this year, um, knowing that this will set the base data hopefully for the future numbers. And so numbers that we've had currently, um, I think you could just roll to window. Okay. With three or two other incidents and things like that. So this is the policy that all, uh, principals reviewed with all staff. And, uh, so everybody has been, um, briefed on this. Laura mentioned in the last time we met that, that pretty much happened, didn't it Laura? Across the district, everybody was informed, everybody was educated about this. People are very well aware of what the policy is and what the incident reporting form is for. Any questions on that? Okay. Uh, student attendance, suspension expulsion, again, just some updates there. Uh, I want to go to the student restraint policy. And separate from this packet, what I caught when I went through the packet is there's one little paragraph that we missed. And so the, the separate one sitting before you at your table is another one. That's the one I want you to look at. This policy was basically rewritten and updated. We were waiting all year last year, waiting to see what the legislature would do. Cause there was a lot of talk that the legislature was going to come out with mandates. Well, it was put into a study. And so after that occurred, Patty and her team and a lot of other people, uh, were working on updating this policy. And the one piece, if you turn to the third page that we, that was, that we missed in here was the staff training piece. And this is what's currently reflective of what's going on right now for staff training. And so I'm not going to go through all the different components of the restraint policy. But if you had any questions that you caught, uh, as you read it, you could certainly ask me now. Okay. AP 6310, student behavior, discipline and reporting. Again, significantly updated. So I'm going to go to that policy and it's further back into your packet of things, 6310. And there was a couple of things that I wanted to point out to you. As this was reviewed by, again, several different folks. If you go to the updated policy and you go to the bottom of page one, I want to make this really clear because this question comes up all the time. What can I do as an employee of the Fargo Public Schools? A student, um, is acting out in those types of things. You know, if I intervene, if I get involved, will I be? Does not prohibit action taken by an employee for self-defense, protection of persons or property, obtaining possession of a weapon or voluntarily engaged in by students. Complaints alleging that a district inflicted corporal punishment may be dealt in accordance with administrative policy 4060 and other, other things. So basically what it says is if you appropriately step in to quell a disturbance, two students get into an argument, you step in, that is well within the right of the employee. North Dakota Sentry Code says that is okay. The other thing is we have indoor, we have the insurance reserve fund. And so if, uh, any kind of suit were to be brought forward, we have protection for that as a district. And so I don't ever want people to think that they can't intervene because we are in charge of providing a safe environment for students. And if a hazard or a dangerous situation presents itself, and if it's appropriate, again, if it's not something like we would do with a school shooting, but it's something that we could step in on, that is very well within our, within our purview. And that is why the CPI training and the other training that we're trying to get through to all of our, uh, staff on the front lines and making sure that we're improving that process, making sure that that training is better and that it's more widespread. So people understand that. So they don't have to be fearful of their jobs for stepping in on a situation where we can quell a disturbance. And so I want people to feel comfortable with that and understand there is protection there. And the district is, will protect people from that. So that's that piece in there. That's always been there in that policy. That's not, not been there. And that has been part of North Dakota Sentry Code for a very long time. Okay. But I think we need to make that more clear for people so they understand it. Uh, if you go down, um, on page two of that policy, examples of student behavior violations. A lot of this section was looked at and rewritten, changing some of the wording and adding some rubrics. When you see investigation for disciplinary procedures, rubrics that help give people better guidance. And so we're implementing this this year. We'll see how it works for folks. But these boxes that you see, those are all new too, within the policy. And then I want to, I want to go to major behavioral violations, and that's on page four of the new, new policy. In there it says, major violations must be reported to the building principal by submitting student behavior reporting form elementary or as power school login at the secondary level. We are working to get this to be more of a power school login, but right now we don't have that capability. And that is a major, um, job, um, goal for Dale, who works with Power School in our district. So we'll have that by the end of the year. So in lieu of that, we have, we have a student behavior reporting form for now. But this is what I want to point out. The principal will conduct further investigation and report findings to parents, and this did not exist before, and classroom teacher or appropriate staff, support staff. What I've asked administrators to do is that if we have major incidents, if we have a student behavior form, incident form filled out to conduct the investigation and not only just get back and work with parents, but get back with the teachers who were involved and work as a team at finding out, at resolving the issue or developing a new plan, but communicating across the board what's going on. And so that is in provision now. And we have told our administrators that the communication line has to be not only with parents, but staff, support staff, teachers, whoever might be involved. And so that is part of policy now. Okay? And I believe if you go to the back then, you'll see the student behavior reporting form that, uh, the group has put together. And so as I said, all of these policies, um, that we've made these adjustments to, we're going to put them into force. We'll see how things are going, if we need to make some adjustments. The reporting procedures, again, that's kind of going down a new avenue here. If we see that we need to make some adjustments, we're very, very much willing to do that. And, uh, and continue. And, and I guess the overall tone for me has been, let's work on this as a team. We need to do this as a team because everybody's involved at every level. And unless we do this as a team, we're not going to be able to make, make a change and, and hopefully, uh, make things better here. And if not, anything is to better understand what's going on and having, uh, a better baseline data to work with too. Cause that's really the purpose of the forms, uh, is to make sure that we have good baseline data to work with. So as you can see, there was a, a pretty robust group of, and there's other policies here that I listed in here that I'm not going to go through because a lot of them are self-explanatory. But very robust, uh, policy review, a lot of changes and additions to some, some new. I anticipate hopefully that next year we won't have this big of a workload on this. Um, and we will be moving into the 4,000 series next year. And that's a very large group of policies, so we may split it in half. We'll see where we end up with that. So if there's any questions about policy reviews or updates, I'd be happy to answer those.
John?
No questions, but I want to thank you for the work that you put into this. And thank you very much Laura and the FEA for your collaboration with us and, and working together. And anxious to hear how this, uh, progresses throughout the school year. Thank you.
And I just need to add, there's a huge team of people here. I mean, this is, uh, several departments deep, different people that have worked on these things. Um, my job working with Ann Marie is to pull it all together. Uh, Ann Marie is the keeper, if you will, of policies. So she does all the formatting, making sure all the things are done the way that we want so that all the policies look the same. And so, um, it is a very big circle of folks. And, and like I said, working with Laura, working with the FEA, I, I want to have that relationship. So they're part of that team too.
Well, thank you very much. I've seen no other questions. Um, before we take a short break, let's take action on the consent agenda, just to get that out of the way, if that's okay.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as written.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed signify by saying no. Motion carries. Item A and B together. Um, we went through these obviously at our last meeting. And if it's okay, we'll have Dr. Schatz take us through any changes or updates and address any questions on either A and B and then we'll act on them together.
Thank you. Uh, like we did last, uh, board meeting, we reviewed each one of these, uh, identified where we had any, uh, adjustments, changes and where it was reflected in the, uh, operational plan, the work that we have before us this year. Uh, there have been no subsequent changes since, uh, that, uh, reading, if you will. So we're here tonight asking that you approve, uh, the operational plan and reapprove the strategic plan so that we could continue to put that in action for us as a district. Um, and so that's where we sit right now with these two documents.
Dinah?
Jim, I move that we accept the, uh, re, the updated strategic plan and the 2017-18 operational plan as provided.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, would you call the roll please?
Ani?
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes.
Yes.
Goldenberg?
Yes.
Knudsen?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Rowan Biker?
Yes.
Ulrich?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes. I say with a heavy heart because I think we just authorized one incredible year of work for the guy to my right. Good luck. Brings us to the next item on our business agenda, which is our health insurance recommendation. Uh, and I believe we have Mr. Nelson here from the committee to probably give us some insights. Or perhaps Brock, are you leading this off?
I think my wife wish she could turn me off sometimes too here, so. Thank you. And, uh, as long as everybody that's been getting up have been saying, uh, what they were former, I'm a former Roosevelt Rough Rider, Ben Franklin Wildcat and Fargo North Spartan. So spent many, many, many years in the Fargo Public Schools. And this is my 31st year, uh, being back at Ben Franklin. And I think this is my 27th year on the Health Insurance Committee. This, this all started, um, I think because of me and Dan Huffman, um, back in 1990, in, I was the lead teacher negotiator. And, uh, he was the board negotiator at the time. And that's when we decided to form a committee and get health insurance out of the negotiations process and into a committee process. And, uh, that committee has grown, um, tremendously over the years. And I think the knowledge that we have gained as employees and members of that group, uh, is incredible, especially over the last, uh, half a dozen, uh, years. And, um, what we have, we have tried to make ourselves insurance experts as well. And, uh, despite that being a very part-time job. But, uh, the Health Insurance Committee has great discussion. And we really rely on our consultant Gallagher as well in helping with this and recommendations from Blue Cross, Blue Shield, who, um, you accepted their bid earlier. And now we had figured out, okay, now how are we going to fund this as a committee? And I know it says on here that the funding increase, it's an 8% funding level increase. But actually our increase in the health insurance plan is just a hair under 12%. And the reason it says 8% is because our increase in deductibles for our employees that are members of the plan, uh, increases in those deductibles will reduce that funding level from 12% to 8%. And then in working with our committee and also with your planning committee, come up with the plan, uh, as is presented, presented today. Um, and as always, we always look at, do we change plan? Do we change deductible? Do we change percentage that our employees pay, uh, and so forth? Um, those are the, the different things we, we look at. The thing we have also used much to our advantage over the last several years is the bid process. Um, and that sharpens up some of those fixed costs. You know, we're, we're self-funded, so really, you know, the vast majority of our costs are, are charges. So the fixed costs are the, the reinsurance and the administration and that type of thing. Uh, but the, um, the bid process really has helped, uh, get a little sharper pencil, uh, we feel. And we would, we will continue, we will continue doing that in the future. And our, it is our belief that, um, those forces will have much more impact, uh, in the future than they have ever had in the past, uh, with the insurance, uh, industry in this area. So, um, you know, I think the, the memo was pretty self-explanatory on how this is. Is that, you know, it was a 12% increase, the employees, uh, be it the traditional plan or the high deductible plan and the changes there, um, reduce that to about an 8% uh, increase. And then the, you can see the different, the different percentages that are paid depending on if you are single SPD or family, uh, involved with that. Brock, would you like to add anything or? Questions?
When we were looking at the budgets and planning, was, was that modeled with this 8% increase?
Members of the board, John, yes, it was. We have, uh, figured that into the health insurance line in the general fund budget already at this current rate.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? John?
Uh, I want to say thank you to everybody on that Health Insurance Committee. I want to say thank you to everybody on that Health Insurance Committee for doing this hard work so that I don't have to do anything with this, as little as possible.
Just to be clear, you do have to do something?
I do have to do something.
We're going to be voting shortly here.
Yes. But, thank you very much.
Well, seeing no other questions, the chair would entertain a motion to accept the Health Insurance Committee's recommendation.
I move that we accept the Health Committee's recommendation as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Anne Marie, please call the roll.
Boyd?
Yes.
Goldenberg?
Yes.
Knutson?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Rowan Biker?
Yes.
Ulrich?
Yes.
Ani?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes. Before we go on to our last business item, you will have noticed, and thank you very much, John, and you can stay for this because I'm not quite done with health insurance. You will have noticed a couple more pages that were in your packet. We have a Health Insurance Internal Service Fund. And in the past, this has always been accounted for over on the business side of the House. But we've really never, as a board, really had this data broken out quite like this. And Brock, could you take a moment just to kind of walk us through that, that budget analysis? And just to put this into context for everybody, we did a budget adjustment and took action, as per ELs, at the end of last calendar year to transfer some of our general fund dollars over to this fund to shore it up, to make sure we had adequate reserves in this fund. And that triggered a question or two between Brock and I, which I think triggered the creation of this. So if you'd be so kind to walk us through it.
Sure. Mr. President, members of the board, the, the Health Insurance or Internal Service Fund really does fall into, I believe it's EL seven, which is the one that governs how we present budgets. And, and this fund, based on the fact that we did an inter-fund transfer, I think opened our eyes to the fact that we should be sharing with you the level of, of transactions that happen within the Health Insurance Fund. So what we put together here was last year's actual, and then the proposed budget for the coming year. And this is all based on the percentages of increase that John Nelson just shared with you specifically in the health insurance. But we also then break out the other insurance plans that we have there. So if you just look at what we just talked about with health insurance, you see the Select Choice Plan. It shows the amount that's brought in from employee and employer, estimated at just over 12 million, and the Cobra Plans. And I want to cover a little bit for you. If you look at the, that plan and then the HDHP, which is the High Deductible Health Savings Account Plan that we have, you'll see that with dollars in and then projected claims and, and stop-loss premiums, administrative fees, all those fixed costs that John talked about, we're showing in the fiscal year about a $1.4 million deficit in the traditional plan and about a $1 million surplus in the high deductible plan. What you need to keep in mind in that regard is, these get a little complicated because we cross years. So a big reflection of that loss is based on last year's premium because our health insurance plan runs on a calendar year because of the high deductible plan and the tax implications of that. But our fiscal year, of course, is July 1st to June 30th. And so part of the premiums are based on what premiums were paid January through, through June of last year. Now, we've got the rate increases in there. So the end of the year, that net impact of a loss of $400,000, we hope that with the changes that John talked about, that we've tried to equalize that and also not see a hit to the fund balance in this plan. And you address it as a board in the last fiscal year. So our goal is to continue to try to get to about a six-month reserve in the, in this fund. And we're about at four and a half roughly now. And we think with some of the equalization we've done, both with premium increases and then changing the design a little bit, that we'll hopefully do that. So we'll continue to monitor that as we go forward and, and bring that to your attention as we go. Then you've got the same information for the dental insurance plan. And of course, participant numbers are different there than they are in the health plan. And then we've got unemployment and worker, workforce safety and insurance, all the things that in the employee benefits line of your general fund budget, these all have a separate line item that get accounted for. So you see that in that fringe benefits line. Employee wellness, we, we have some things that we do through our wellness program. We're going to be changing that as we go forward into the current year, which affects dollars that come out of the Health Savings Account Plan. We're going to be looking for, at least for the current year, discontinuing the Well You program that we've had through Sanford. But we are going to continue things like the Health Club reimbursement to really try to encourage people to be more active and then get their reimbursements for a certain amount of monthly visits. We'll continue the, the flu shot and screening. These are all things that the Health Insurance Committee talks about are valuable to our employees. But are we really seeing bang for the buck in the other parts of Well You? And we feel like with the work that Gallagher has done with us, that, that we can offset some of that. So this really just gives you an opportunity to see both projected revenues coming in and what we see expenses being based on trend data and, and historical claims information on our plans. And then gets to the bottom line that Jim talked about with our fund balance. And you recall, this got raised during the fact finding hearing. We talk about it in fund balances in the Health Insurance Committee. It gets talked about with our general fund. You know, we've got a lot of exposure out there. We're responsible for the first $200,000 of every claim that comes in, comes in in your health insurance plan. And so there's a lot of risk that's out there. And so you need to make sure that, that we have reserve to be able to offset that. And so we continue to try to, to be aware of that on the Health Insurance Committee as well. So thought it was important for you to see this, based on information that we've had in the past. If you want to continue to see this data, we're happy to provide it. If not, then we'd look at that EL and we monitor it and decide whether or not you want to do something different with that information.
Thank you, Brock. Any questions regarding that? Super. We'll go on to our last business item, which is the monitoring of GP one, two, and three. First of all, I want to thank you all for taking the time and completing your homework and getting it back into Anne Marie. I think there were actually two comments. Before we actually take a motion, I'll just see if anybody wants to expand upon either of those comments or anything else board members have. Rebecca?
My comment is listed on page three, and it's regarding monitoring the process and performance at each meeting. I guess I just wanted some clarification as to what that means. Because I'm, well, it's just what I wrote there. I'm not sure if that's something that we actually do, but I might be misunderstanding what it means.
It's what we're doing right now, actually. I think maybe there's some wordsmithing to do here because we don't necessarily do GPs or Board Superintendent Relationship Policies at each meeting. We've got them on a calendar rotation, obviously, right along with the ELs. So maybe if you'd make a note for us to look at that at governance, see if we need to wordsmith that. But I think that's what that's referencing, to keep us on track with the fact that we have GPs, ELs, and BSRs, which are really our toolkit for doing our work as a governing body. Linda?
Is it possible that this is a holdover from when we used to do debriefing at the end of every meeting, that we decided intentionally to discontinue a year or so ago?
Maybe, but I don't think so. I, I think this is really right to the heart of our style of governance and the fact that we are supposed to be monitoring these things at our regular board meetings. But it's the each-meeting part that I think is the wordsmithing problem. But it could be, in part, a holdover from that we debrief at the end of each meeting, too. That was more, I think, to make sure, did we do our work that night? I, I think this is really a reference to, are we tracking our GPs or ELs or BSRs on a consistent basis? Which we do, but it just isn't necessarily each meeting. Does that help? David?
I, excuse me. I think the comment I made regarding a safe workplace has been very well addressed by the changes in the administrative policy. So I, I thank Dr. Schatz for all the work he's done there. And Laura?
I move that we accept, where are we, GP, monitoring one, two, and three as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please call the roll, Anne Marie.
Boyd?
Yes.
Goldenberg?
Yes.
Knutson?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Rowan Biker?
Yes.
Ulrich?
Yes.
Ani?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes. Gets us through our business and to our board reports. The first item is, we need to let the state know who our official delegates are going to be from Fargo. And I believe we can have five, if I'm not, not mistaken.
We are allotted five. You already have, you already a delegate for something else. And I believe Linda's the only board member not planning to attend, so.
So, well, is there anybody that is dying to be a delegate, first off? Is there anybody who is hoping to sneak out early on Friday afternoon? Be honest, I mean. Yes?
I'm not trying to sneak out early, but I wanted, could you just remind us again of the dates of the convention? Twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, twenty-sixth of the last seminar and the start of the annual conference, and then twenty-seventh is the annual conference.
And there, delegates technically don't have to vote until Friday afternoon. There will be a delegate meeting at the end of the day on Thursday that I think maybe will be changing a little bit because we had a request from the governor that he'd like to come and address the group. And I think that might be where it happens. Well, seeing how nobody is saying no, I'll just pick five of you, get them to Anne Marie, and she will make you a delegate. Those that aren't delegates will submit as an alternate in case somebody gets sick. Brings us to committee and liaisons on reports.
So the Communication Committee will have its first meeting on Friday, September the 22nd at 7:30 in the morning. And I met with all of my school principals this past week, just to get acquainted, hear about the school year, et cetera, and nothing else.
South is one of my liaison schools. They're having their homecoming activities. I wasn't able to attend their coronation last night, but I'm going to be at football game.
Kristy?
I've been a little busy, so I have not yet met my principals and such at my schools. During the break, I sent you all an email. We have our grand opening next Wednesday, so I would invite all of you to come and check out what I've been up to and staying busy with.
Brandy?
Well, I have set the date for September 26th for Kennedy and Discovery. So I'll be at Kennedy in the morning from eight to 10, and then Discovery from one to three. And I will be at the South versus North game on Friday.
You mean, South's victory, you're going to?
No.
Okay. Yes. John?
Negotiations Committee, I think I want to try and meet before the end of September to potentially talk about some professional development for the group, hopefully at least the members of the committee, but hoping to invite everybody for something in October. So I'll have more details on that and we'll get more, have an email sent out, Poland for dates and times for that. Otherwise, I was able to attend the first half of the Ben Franklin PTA meeting last night and then ran over to Washington to attend their full meeting. And I want to thank every PTA in the city, for all the teachers that show up late for that, the, the parents that show up and show an active interest in their schools, and to the volunteers that commit so much time making their schools a better place and trying to do best for their kids. So thank you very much.
Rebecca?
The Native American Commission was to meet last Thursday, but the commissioners were busy attending to the funeral and assistance of the family of Savannah, passed away. So that meeting is being rescheduled. And I still have to set my initial meetings with my liaison schools, but I will do that soon.
Linda?
The Community Development Committee will meet in City Hall next Tuesday. And I, too, will be meeting with my schools at the end of September. I have not had a chance to do that yet.
Super. Well, Anne Marie has made me look professional again and produced a president's calendar report for everybody. You might need a couple more over there. And Rebecca, I, I think I'm going to be missing the September 26th board meeting, so you'll probably have to be in charge of that one, based upon this, anyway. Or at least I'll be showing up right at about 5:31. Now, please wear your favorite outfit, whatever that might be, because I think we have a photo op prior to the start of our next board meeting. You'll notice also highlighted is a joint meeting with the Cities and Park District. And that's going to be, I believe, up at Edgewood, hosted by the Park District. And it looks like we have some homework that's going to be coming out shortly to us. Couple other things on my calendar. I just drove in from Bismarck before the start of this meeting. How I ended up being a lucky straw drawer, but I have been put on DPI's Strategic Planning Steering Committee. They're going to go through a process, well, they're midway through a process, quite frankly, of really trying to develop a strategic plan for the entire state and hopefully all stakeholders in the state involved with K-12 education, although that kind of morphed into pre-K-12 education during the steering committee meeting. And I'm not sure where it's going to be, but the folks that are kind of shepherding this project at DPI, which is an outside consulting group, and I believe Kirsten are going to be in Fargo on Monday, this coming Monday, holding two different meetings, at least that's my understanding from what they shared today. One with area educators, teachers, and administrators. And then later in the day with the general public to share what they uncovered in their original work, what we kind of uncovered today in the brainstorming session that took place in Bismarck. There'll be four meetings throughout the state, just to get feedback and other ideas, expand the, the number of folks that are hopefully weighing in with their thoughts. And then it looks like I get to have at least two or three more great opportunities to go to Bismarck and see this actually come to fruition and turn into the operational plan of DPI. Now, I find this all pretty fascinating because I believe we have the, a governor who's starting up a task force very similar to this, almost in parallel. So hopefully, everybody's going to be on the same page. And we're going to try to get all the different stakeholders in the state to at least find one or two common goals that we can all work towards that might improve student achievement. Friday, I fly out to Kansas City for the Western Region Meeting of School District, or State School Board Associations. And I'll come back Sunday, hopefully really knowledgeable about who we've nominated, since we've chosen not to do it at the Chicago meeting, so we can go to another meeting to do it. You can probably tell how tickled pink I am about this, but. So that's it for my report. Our next regular meeting will be on September 26th. Please come early for photos. Can they show up right at 5:00? Do you think that's going to be enough time for individual and group photos? Or you want us here at 4:30?
Just a little bit before 5:00 would suffice. Yep.
So try to, try to shoot for like 4:30 to 4:45. With the trains, if you shoot for 4:30, you might be here at 4:45. And, oh, go ahead, Linda.
This is under other reports, I suppose. I normally don't promote our concerts, but there's a special one that NDSU and the Symphony has put together. It's a hurricane relief concert this Sunday. So there's posters for both on the back table. So if you could take them for your take them for yourself or to hang up in your favorite coffee place, that'd be great. Hope to see you there. Thanks.
I have one final thing, Brock. Maybe you can help me out. Maybe I'm the only purveyor of this knowledge. I received a letter in the mail, because I'm the board president, from some organization who is recognizing Jackie as an outstanding public school CPA. You know anything about this? Because I was going to bring it, but I didn't have time to get it home once I got done in Bismarck.
I did not get a letter, so...
No, your name's not on it at all.
Right. All I know about it is, through her work as a CPA and another professional development opportunity in regards to school finance, there is a criteria for years of service in school finance and some testing that she does, that she chose to participate in this year and received that certification. I believe we wrote about it, I'm looking at Ann Marie. It was in the Journey, I believe. Is that correct?
Yep, the first edition of the school year.
Yep. And so it's just the formal recognition, I think, to the school board that she's in fact completed that and has received that certification.
Well, thank you. I will hold on to the letter and bring it in to share it with the rest of the board, but I certainly want to, hats off to Jackie. She makes you look good all the time. With that, we are officially adjourned.